This is our third District Four Town Hall meeting for this year. The audience present clearly identifies that the last couple of times you found it valuable information. Tonight, I can assure you, you will not be disappointed if you came to receive information specifically regarding the city of Inglewood and more importantly focusing closely to District Four. In order to start our meeting off, I thought it would be only more than appropriate that we recognize an individual that has been our visionary for the last several years since 2011. A visionary that said, "I'm taking a dough of a city that is struggling with a major deficit to say that, given the opportunity," and I want to stress, "given the opportunity," he didn't do that, he earned this opportunity through your vote to say that I want to represent you. And he has represented us, the city of Inglewood, and us residents very well. Please help me recognize our distinguished Mayor James T. Butts Jr.
Good evening, everybody. Now, I started with that clip for a reason. There's a lot of people struggled and suffered for a town that is 97% black and brown to be poised to be the preeminent city in this nation. Now, we kind of snuck up on everybody, okay? We are poised to have about $10 billion of construction, development, and economic activity that will take place in this nine-square-mile city. And that $10 billion is not going to go the place it usually goes. And there are some people who are very angry about it. They're also very angry because it hasn't cost us any money because we've done the smart things to exploit the blessings of our microclimate, of our geography, being in the middle of four freeways, being about three miles from the beach, two miles, two and a half miles from the second busiest airport in the country. All these things that we had available to us, these advantages that we didn't exploit before. So I'm gonna get to the end of the story first. When I took office, and Council Franklin was here, and Eli Morales was here, we had a 17.5% unemployment rate, one of the highest unemployment rates in the state of California. Today, that employment rate is down to 4.8%. When I took office, there was no construction activity of any note. In 2017, women-led and minority-led disadvantaged businesses that are subcontractors on this project received $166 million. They took those contracts to live up to the 35% goal for local hire, which dropped our unemployment rate. Since the end of 2012, our property values in the city of Inglewood have gone up 140%. Now, you would have papers, specifically the Daily Breeze, tell you that we don't earn our money because we don't have seven-hour council meetings anymore. Anybody remember the six- and seven-hour council meetings? Okay. Okay, let me tell you what they led to. They led to an $18 million structural deficit, being down to our last $11 million. And by September of 2011, by September of 2011, we would not have made payroll, which meant we would be cash flow bankrupt. We're in an entirely different situation today. At the end of this fiscal year, in about 20 days, less than 20 days, 19 days, we will have realized a $25 million surplus this year for this year's budget alone, and we will have $50 million in reserves in the bank. Moody's issued an advisory that of all the cities they rated in the country, when it comes to your general fund cash reserves as a percentage of your spending plan, Inglewood far surpasses any city in the country they rate for stability. So let's talk about how we got here, how Inglewood has risen. So let's look at our past. We used to have the Lakers, the Kings. We had the Forum with concerts, we had the racetrack, we shipped about 46,000 people on average every day. And I was here from '72 to '91 in the police department, and that was the Inglewood that I knew. I left, went to be the police chief in Santa Monica for 15 years, and then I ran counterterrorism and public safety for the World Airport System for five years, and I came back in 2011. And we had the Sizzler, the Big Donut, the Kings, the Lakers, and when I came back, we had, go ahead, big guy, we had the Big Donut and the Sizzler. The Big Donut, though, now has lines out to the curb, if you notice. The Big Donut is the pinks of donut shops. There's a Randy's Donut in Century City now. That's how much people want to associate with Inglewood. Go ahead, my man. So I made this list up in 2017. It's a 100-year history of the city. From 1922 to 1931, the Ku Klux Klan's regional headquarters was in Inglewood, California. A lot of people don't know that. In 1938, the racetrack opened, and '49, there was a big fire. It opened again in 1950, in '99. In 1967, Jack Kent Cooke built the Forum. The Lakers started there first, and the Kings joined them in 1999. They left for the Staples Center in 2012. The racetrack closed. The demise of the racetrack was off-track betting. It used to be if you wanted to bet your horse, you had a particular horse you wanted to bet, you had to go to that track to bet it where it ran. Then when they got to giving off-track betting, the state allowed off-track betting, you could bet your horse in Santa Anita watching a television, and that killed our crowds at the racetrack. 2014, we entered into a development agreement with MSG to reopen the Forum, and people said, "People will never come to Inglewood to go to concerts again." Today, it's the number-one concert venue in the state of California, number-two in the country, and number-three in the world for booked events. In 2016, well, actually, 2015, we announced that we were going to seek an NFL team, and people said, "The NFL will never come to Inglewood." In 2016, January, the Rams announced, and the league announced, that they were coming to Inglewood. In 2017, the Chargers asked if they could come as well, and we said, "Why not?" In 2017, the Clippers announced joining in with the city in an ENA, an exclusive negotiations agreement, to build an NBA arena. In 2020, the L.A. stadium will open, the L.A. Philharmonic Youth Orchestra will move from Los Angeles to Inglewood, and in 2022, Super Bowl LVII will be held in Inglewood, and the NFL Network is going to move from Culver City to Inglewood. Go to the next slide. So these are the things that happened this year, a couple of them I put on the last slide, but also the Girl Scouts of the United States have purchased a building on North La Brea across from the old Inglewood Car Wash, and they're going to move their regional headquarters from Marina Del Rey to Inglewood, California. Now, you know why everybody applauded, because everybody knows if the Girl Scouts move to your city, it's all over. In 2023, like I said, 2022, the Super Bowl LVII will be played here. In 2023, the NCAA Championship Bowl game will be played here. 2024, we just had some legislation passed that will make it impossible for people to use the sequel laws to stop the construction of the Clippers Arena, so I'm telling you, in 2024, the Clippers will open their first home game in the city of Inglewood. In 2026, we're negotiating for a FIFA World Cup soccer match, championship match, and in 2028, it's already been decided, the World Olympic Games will open in Inglewood, California. We are now seeking to have basketball played here. Continue on. So this is what Randy's Donut would look like today if we rebuilt it. The new Inglewood, all right? The new Inglewood. Go on, my man. I mean, this is what the topography is going to look like. Keep going. Try it again. So we did this in 2017. We put these on some bus stops. We put the Rams and the Forum. And by 2018, it's obsolete. Now, we need the Clippers, we need the L.A. Philharmonic, we need the Girl Scouts, so we're gonna just stop doing bus bench advertisement until we get done. Go on. We like to say the only thing that's changed in Inglewood is everything. Isn't that the truth? That's my cue when I stop talking. All right. So people say Inglewood is, some people say Inglewood is lucky. Well, let me show you how lucky we were. So this is where we were in 2011. We had an $18 million structural deficit, we wouldn't have made payroll in six to eight months, we were financing water purchases out of our capital infrastructure budget. What does that mean? That means money that we had set aside to renew our 60-year-old sewer and water delivery system, that money that should have been spent every year renewing our pipes, we had to spend just to purchase water. Inglewood has springs, we pump about 50% of the water our residents use, we buy the rest from Golden State. And so what was happening? Those of you that live near Century, remember there were sinkholes on Century, probably every 90 days. There were sinkholes across the city. That's because elected officials seldom spend money on things that people can't see, because you don't get any credit for it. But you sure get a lot of attention when there are holes developing the street. Our average police vehicle had 150,000 miles on it. We have purchased 25 new police vehicles this year, we're gonna get 25 next year, and 25 the year after that. Every patrol vehicle within three years will be brand-new. Our police computer-aid dispatch system was written in 1986 in Cobal. I know that because I was on the project team, I was a captain in the police department. We just replaced that with a brand-new $3 million records management and computer-aided dispatch system that is GPS-enabled, so that we can see where every police car is at every moment. Every portable radio the officers have personally are GPS-enabled, so we'll know where officers on foot are if they are not able to be raised on the radio. Our residential sound insulation program was defunded. We lost $37 million in four years. Went to, we went to Washington, to the FAA, we got $100 million, and we got another, between Lawa and the FAA, we got $100 million to resurrect our sound insulation program. It is now the number-one sound insulation program in the country, number-one in the We had an unfunded liability of $330 million for a lifetime medical program that we had given to the employees for a dependent and the employee if they turned in 800 hours of sick leave, accommodations for sick leave and vacation. And that unfunded liability, because nothing was being set aside by either the employees or the city, it aggregated to about $330 million over the next 30 years. We eliminated it, we put aside $4 million for a match for the employees to start their own retirement health savings plan, and that $4 million was a good expenditure because it has resulted in our unfunded liability going down to $117 million. Now, if we'd left things as they were, if we made it through 2011, when I said we were going to be cash flow bankrupt, by 2017, we would have been spending about $9 million a year for medical benefits for people that don't work here anymore, and we would have been cash flow bankrupt again. So this is what we've reduced it down to, 152 million. It's manageable because as we get older, the employees, what do they do? They won't be there anymore, and this will eventually go away because people leaving here will not get lifetime medical benefits paid for by the taxpayers. We had to eliminate 140 positions, 64 of them had people in them, we gave no cost-of-living increases. We furloughed all the employees an extra day a week to save 10%. We raised water rates, we outsourced parking control, tree trimming, and street sweeping. We used to trim about 1,200 trees a year. We have a 19,000-tree inventory. That meant whether you needed it or not, we would trim your trees once every 20 years, whether you needed it or not. That's a joke, you guys. But we outsourced, we trimmed 6,000 trees a year, so on the average, when we get all caught up, you should get your trees trimmed every three years. We're also working on these magnolias. We have a lot of magnolia trees in Inglewood, and they are infested by these parasites. And they, some of you may have seen like these droppings that are on the sidewalk and on the street, and actually what it is, that's the excrement from these little bugs, and it's mostly sugar, and it's not good for the paint on your car. So we've been taking out these diseased magnolias, but we have made a lot of progress. We had two street sweepers seven years ago, eight years ago now, and we had two street sweeping personnel. The machines were about 35 years old, and I think I told you before, one was broken about all the time, but it worked out because one of the employees was injured all the time, so we always had one street sweeper. Well, now we've contracted out, we have five street sweepers, and this reduces the contamination of our waters, and it saves the city about 500,000 a year. So we already talked about the Forum, we can go forward. Now, here we are with our reserves. We'll finish this year at about $50 million in the bank, having started at $11 million, and we are very solid financially right now. And I just put this picture in there because that's me in 1980 in the middle, and I thought it was a good picture. The crime rate in Inglewood has dropped dramatically over the years. That trend line shows you where it's headed. We're in our eighth consecutive year of the lowest crime rate in the history of the city. Property values, up 137% since the end of 2012, and despite what people might tell you, it's not because of the stadium, it's because we managed the city properly, and then people looked at Inglewood and said, "This is a good, this is a value compared to Westchester and Culver City and Santa Monica. This city has value, and so it's a more desirable city." So our economic investments are going to continue to accelerate this trend, but right now, what we've done is offer the same thing to our residents that people in Beverly Hills and Santa Monica and Culver City have taken for granted. That's two opportunities. First opportunity is the mass generational wealth within your property, to have a property that appreciates so that if you have children that you want to leave it to, you can pass on generational wealth to them. Or if you don't like your kids, you can do a reverse mortgage, and you don't have to depend on Social Security, but the choice is now yours. Self-determination, the choice is yours. We've been upgraded four times in three years. Go ahead, sir. Moody's and Standard Poor's, this was that, wait, back up one second. This was that quote from Moody's in 2016. Moreover, the fund balance as a percent of operating revenues far surpasses other Moody's rated cities nationwide, and saw an impressive increase from 2011 to 2014. I like to remind people I took office in 2011. Go ahead, sir. So Standard and Poor upgraded our bond ratings again in 2017 to AA. And of course, here we are in the casino, so we don't have to show you too many pictures of that. That really happened. I used to say, you know, "We're gonna have, well, look around." January 2018, we opened a 35,000-square-foot, $27 million senior center that had been promised to our seniors since 2006, and it is the largest facility of its type in the state All right. We have 177 residential units that are gonna go up at the old Buffet and Cadillac site. The first four is gonna be retail, the anchor tenant is going to be Target, that's going to face La Brea, and it's going to look like this. Thomas Safferson Associates does it. If you've been to Pasadena, you'll see their work. The Daniel Freeman site will be Grace Park, and there's gonna be about 221 units that are priced between $600,000 and $1 million. Go ahead, sir. I'm not gonna dwell on this because is Lisa Trivaleti here? Okay, so Lisa Trivaleti is going to talk about, in a minute, our transit connection, our last-mile connection between the metro line, which will stop at Market in Florence, and how we're gonna get people from there to the Forum, the NFL Stadium, and the Clippers Arena. And so I'm gonna just save that for Lisa. Go ahead, sir. This is the Consolidated Rental Car Center. That's gonna be part of the connection between us, the Green Line, and the airport. And then we broke ground in 2017 for the football stadium. Has anybody driven by it recently? It's pretty impressive, isn't it? Okay, so I want you to soak this in. What you are living through right now is history. You are living through the transition of a city from mediocrity to greatness, and I just want all of us to soak this in. I soak it in every day because I worked for this city from 1972 to 1991, and I thought it was pretty good. Well, it's nothing compared to what we're going to be, nothing compared to what we're going to be. And this is what Champions Plaza will look like. It's 298 acres, a 70,000-seat football stadium, a 300-key hotel, a movie theater, 800,000 square feet of grade-A office space, 900,000 square feet of retail and fine dining, four public parks that will belong to the city at the developer's expense, 2,000 residential units, two lakes, and a partridge in a pear tree. This will be the largest sports entertainment complex in the western United States. And you keep going, and these are just some pictures of what the development's going to look like. And I was gonna play another video for you. Keep going, sir, but it doesn't look like it's gonna happen, and this was like, we're so good now, we have our own trailer, and I wanted to play it for you. But you can take my word for it, the only thing that's changed in Inglewood is everything. And I like to say that when I came back to town, and I would listen to people, and people would ask Inglewood residents where they live, and they would say, "I live just south of Culver City." They'd say, "Child, I live right next to Westchester. I live over near the airport." And now, when you ask somebody in Inglewood where they live, they say, "I live in Inglewood, California." And you become the center of attention. So I'm about to stop, but I'm gonna tell you, there're gonna be people that are gonna try and convince you, one, that we trick people, two, that we're lazy, but they can't explain how we do what we do. So anyway, thank you guys very much.
So the mayor has a couple of minutes for a few questions or comments, but before we do that, I do want to do some housekeeping. Because of the size of this group and the ability for us to be able to move from point A to point B on either side of the room, our staff has been instructed to hold the microphone just below your chin, and just you just speak out. We also ask that you stand, because we are recording this, so that way we have everyone viewed and be able to express yourself. So we'll take a couple of questions or comments from the mayor. Do I see any hands? Gentlemen, please stand.
So for the new stadium, will Inglewood residents get a chance to tour before everybody else? That's one of the first... Hello? You need to be mayor. You need to be the mayor. We've arranged that the first unveiling, opening tour will be open only to Inglewood residents, and we will notify you sometime in the summer of 2020 for those that are interested, the first viewing of the complex. And it's more than just a stadium, it's the landscaping, the facility's able to be used for like weddings outdoors, for meeting spaces. It's gonna be quite fantastic, so yes, yes, and yes.
All right. We'll take up the two more questions, gentleman way over there, and the young lady right there, and then we need to move on. Wait for the mic, please.
Are you gonna have adequate parking for the 70,000 fans, or are they gonna be permitted to park into the neighborhoods?
Well, we're not going to permit neighborhood parking for any of the events, and it is, and you know, it's wonderful that Lisa's here because she's gonna talk about all these wonderful arrangements we're gonna make. And here's, I'm gonna segue to this, you know, I have people, some people say, "Well, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do about all the traffic?" And I say, "Well, what did we do without all the traffic? We darn near went broke." Remember this, you guys, you remember this. Cities that depend on their indigenous sales taxes and property taxes, meaning those revenues that are generated only by the city, people that live in the city, and you have a city of less than 115,000 people, and about 30% of those are children and people that don't work, here's what happens. In boom stock markets, you get by. Every recession, you will struggle. You will struggle. Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, Los Angeles, they all have traffic. You know why? Because they all have entertainment and/or a strong retail base. That is what they have. And so let me tell you something. If you don't want your streets paved, if you don't want your trees trimmed, if you don't want to have that many police, then you stay the way we were. But let me tell you something, I'm not sugarcoating it, there's gonna be traffic some days. But remember this, we had the Lakers and the Kings and the Forum concerts that had a maximum of 17,505. We had the racetrack that averaged 46,000 people on their outbound against the Forum's inbound far five days a week, and that was during rush hour traffic. And I don't remember anybody complaining about that when I was a policeman here, but all of a sudden, since we've done the impossible, let me tell you what I mean by impossible. What we have done attracted three professional sports teams in less than four years. Three professional sports teams in four years has only been done by the three mega-cities, San Francisco, Los Angeles, New York, in a generation, in a generation. And there are people that will now try to make you think as though something bad has happened to us. All right, last question.
Last question. Mike, get the mic, please.
Good evening. How many officers do you currently have on the police department, and what is the plan for the future with all of the development and, you know, everything that we have going now? Thank you.
That's an excellent, excellent question. When I left in 1991 as a deputy chief, we had 217 police officers. When I came back, we had 160. We're now back up to 200, and we plan to go to 250. All right, thank you.
Give it up for the mayor, please. Thank you. Now, we have to move on. We really have to move on. We're already 10 minutes behind the presentors, and I want to give all respect to everyone that came. Also, guests, residents, please be courteous to other people. If you're seated and you have your tote bag at a chair, please... If you're seated and you have your tote bag at a chair, please remove it because people are standing over in a corner, waiting over in the corner because they can't find a seat up front. So I do recommend that you load it over there. There's plenty of seats up front, all around as well. Mayor, want to make one final comment?
Okay, last comment. We have something free for you, free for you. But here's the thing to get this free thing. If you or anybody you know works at Los Angeles International Airport, works at Los Angeles International Airport, whether for the city or for the private companies, and you live in Inglewood, we've received a $14 million grant to start a transportation demand management system, which is basically a free shuttle for our pilot program to take you to work and pick you up and take you home. There were cards out there that I asked kindly that they be passed out to everybody for this reason, because even if you don't work at the airport, you probably know somebody that does. And so we're putting the program together. So please, if you didn't get one of those cards, please take it. All you have to do is go to our website and register, and we will arrange to take you to work. Thank you very much.
So again, all those flyers that are out there, that's why we came up with tote bags this time. Last couple of ones, we didn't have them because people kept complaining about, "I've got enough tote bags." But we have so much information. And what is my thing? With knowledge, there is power. And so we are now giving you a bunch of information, not only in paper form. This is a recorded broadcast that's going to occur. So it'll be on the city council's, city's website, as well as Spectrum. It's going to be a broadcast. So if you don't take copious notes, when we all get a chance to speak, you can always go and go to our website and click onto our YouTube link to be able to see that. I think it's very critical. You heard the mayor's great presentation of the global transparency and the transition of the city. But I want to concentrate on the theme of why we're here. You have spoken, and we have listened. You talked to us about we need more police, we need more public safety, we need more public service, et cetera. The mayor has spoken about how revenue is being generated to be able for us to accommodate those needs. Billionaires are knocking on our doors to say, "We want to come to Inglewood. This is the place to stop." You also heard some of your talk earlier regarding transportation. Traffic is terrible. But anyone who's been around as long as I've had over several decades know what it was like when we had the Hollywood Park racetrack. And you also had the Forum events occurring at the same time. You complained about traffic then, wait now. But then we'll have the revenue and part of the streets been widened, streets been repaired, and also signalization of the signal lighting to be able to accommodate this influx of traffic that's coming and flowing. But more importantly, when's the last time you ever heard of a train, light rail train, coming through the city of Inglewood carrying passengers? That is in the mix. Now, the other concern is, now that we're having trains going to come through the city, how do we get the passengers off the street but on public systems to get now to the different sporting activities, whether it be the arena or the stadium? So now we want to talk about what we call the first mile, last mile. On when you go to the train station, which will be the close one for us in the city of Inglewood off of Florence and Market Street, how do we get you, that just came on a light rail train from Union Station, to get you now to the stadium, to get you to the sports arena? I want to introduce to you one of our consultants that has been, that the city has hired to talk particularly about the proposed Inglewood Transit Corridor project. Please help me recognize Lisa Trifiletta.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for the warm welcome, council member. It is a true honor to be able to work for your great city, to work under the leadership of the mayor and your council, and to work alongside your very esteemed, capable staff here at the city of Inglewood. I had the pleasure of working with the city of Inglewood when I was at the airport, and we worked together in close partnership to work on a transit system that would connect the LAX with an automated people mover to the metro system, and also was able to work with the mayor on the $100 million contribution to do the sound insulation program. So it is, again, it is a real honor to serve you now as a consultant. One of the things that we heard tonight was about all the amazing transformation happening here. And really, you know, this is, you have world-class community, and you're going to have world-class facilities. And so how can we have a transportation and traffic infrastructure that really meets the community concerns and really does exactly what the council member says, is get people out of their cars, get people to use transit, take advantage of the great investment that LA Metro has made here by having, you know, the new Crenshaw line and you have a Green Line. And so that's what my scope and what our charge has been. We are looking at how can we link rail to these major world-class destinations, activity centers in the city? How we can minimize traffic congestion, protect neighborhoods from unwanted traffic intrusion, enhance the transportation corridor for pedestrians and bicyclists and for other modes, and then also bring state-of-the-art technology and really integrate the latest trends in intelligent transportation systems into the whole thing so you have a really working system. Next slide. So we have multiple efforts underway at the same time. One of the things we're doing right away is preparing for the opening day of the stadium with a transportation event program where we're looking at satellite parking lots connected to shuttles, connected to a transit plaza at the very entrance of the stadium, and having also an online parking reservation system where you can buy your ticket for the shuttle, and we can have a working system for opening day. We're also looking at, you know, how we can protect neighborhoods through a series of, you know, expansive preferential parking permit system so that you don't have that type of problem when the events come. But today, the focus is going to be about what the council member talked about. It's what we call the Inglewood Transit Connector, which is a proposal. It's an automated people mover system that would link directly from the Crenshaw line to our activity centers. Right now, I don't know if you can see this clearly, but you have the Crenshaw line with a new station at La Brea downtown, sorry, thank you, downtown Inglewood. And you have the Green Line right here, the Hawthorne Lennox. And at the airport, they're going to be building a new intermodal transportation facility and what they call the Airport-Metro Connector. But none of that solves the problem connecting directly into the stadium, and we want to encourage people to use this great transit network to the stadium. We've looked at the different bus lines. We're talking to every bus operator, LA Metro, Torrance Transit, Santa Monica, Culver City, Gardena, all of the bus lines to see how we can enhance the transit service and the bus service automatically on opening day because right now, there's not enough of these bus lines that would operate on the weekends and in the evening, and it's surely not going to take care of what you're going to need for the events. And we know a lot of people, we really want to encourage people to use the bus system. So we see other great cities having these type of systems. And we've looked across the world, we've looked just across the city here, and we have, you know, whether it be light rail or automated people movers that you see at airports connecting directly to these major event centers. And we want to make a plan for that. And we have made a lot of progress already in a short amount of time. The mayor, as on the Metro Board, he worked with his colleagues at Metro to commission LA Metro to do a study to figure out, why can't we just extend the line that Metro's already building directly into the stadium? Why do we have to have an independent system? Why can't Metro build that? And they looked at that. They did a really strong, you know, analysis. What they determined in their analysis is that to build a stub line in would have a lot of complexity and operational impacts on the rest of the metro system because they are not set up to deal with the major surges during the events. And so with that, not being able to meet the demands of the events, which is what we're really planning the system for, and they don't have the funds in their metro budget to pay for this, they concluded that really what needs to happen here is something just like what LAX is moving forward on, which is an independent automated people mover system that could operate with the right amount of headways, could operate and serve the activity centers, and do so without having a disruption on the rest of the metro system. And so they looked at different alignments in their earlier study. They looked at going down Prairie directly. They looked at coming down off the La Brea station, the downtown Inglewood station, through Market Street, turning on Manchester and coming down Prairie. They looked at also connecting into the airport, that new Airport-Metro Connector station, and even coming down Century Boulevard. And what we did is we took that a step further, and that's exactly what our team, the mayor commissioned a consultant team to take this a step further. We have a lot of the same people that have developed the airport system on our team. And while I, you know, I do environmental and planning, if you have any sort of technical questions specifically about the system, and I'm unable to answer it for you tonight, I will make sure that we will get the answers and we will be available to you to get into the details. But we looked at, similar to what Metro did, we looked at different alignments. And I think, you know, we looked at coming down Century Boulevard and connecting to the new Century and Aviation Station that Metro has, is building. The problem with that is you have to get underneath or go over the 405 freeway. And when you do that, even if you went under, you're taking out lanes of traffic, and that seems to be a fatal flaw, let alone there's a ton of utilities in Century Boulevard. We looked at coming down Arbor Vida directly to, you know, connecting to, again, that new Airport-Metro Connector station. That seemed very attractive. But when you look at the public right-of-way and what would happen to a lot of the residential neighborhoods, and you would have such a displacement, that did not seem to make sense, and you would not have equity of service because we're trying to be able to serve not just the stadium, but you have the Forum. And I think you all are very familiar with the proposed Clippers Arena. That would be a difficult challenge to serve all three if you just came down Arbor Vida. We looked at going down Prairie. The problem with that is that you end up having a major impact on the cemetery, and you miss a golden opportunity to help reactivate Market Street, which is something that I think this plan really is seeking to do, is how can we not only serve your new event centers, but how can we also serve Market Street and connect directly into the new TOD area that the city is envisioning? And that is our plan. Next slide. So when we did this analysis, it's all for you to read if you want that kind of report. It's on envisioninglewood.org. We made this website. We're really going to continue to, continue to load up all of the progress that we're making. All the reports will be available for you. We looked at, you know, what the project cost would be. This is not a cheap project. $600 million, which the numbers need to be refined, but $600 million is a preliminary cost estimate that we see for the Market-Manchester-Prairie alignment. We also saw that that had some of the largest ridership. And on event day, we could see that this plan could accommodate up to 9,500 riders during the peak period, right after an event. And that's the kind of system that we want so that we can get cars off the road. So that's the plan that we proposed in our notice of preparation, which is the very first step when you do an environmental impact report. Next slide. This is the alignment that would be 1.8 miles. It would, it does contemplate five stations. We're looking at what it would mean to have four stations. It would be an elevated people mover. It would not take out lanes of traffic. That would be the goal. And we believe that it would not only promote a direct connection to the event centers, but again, it would do a whole lot to activate the Market Street downtown area. And we think that we can design this in a way that would have minimal utility relocations, and it could be done, you know, in an expeditious way. There's a lot of APMs around. Common characteristics for APMs is that it's a driverless technology. It can be operated in shorter headways. There's very short wait times at the stations, up to three minutes or less. It can meet the peak hour ridership that we believe during, you know, the pre-game or post-game that we would have to accommodate. And again, it's an electric-powered car that really could, again, improve the overall air quality by getting people out of their car. This was picked up in a lot of the local papers. Again, this is just the beginning. We do not have a set design. Our goal is to work with you, with the community, do community charades to come up with a set of design guidelines that would match the spirit and intent of what we're trying to achieve here with the transformation of Inglewood. And again, this shows you, again, it's an elevated system, and we want to encourage people to use this system and not be using their cars. Next. So where are we? We finished a notice of preparation. We had a really amazing scoping meeting. I think a lot of you were able to attend. We received very few letters of people raising concerns. We actually heard a lot from people to say, "How fast can you do this? When can this come online? How are you going to pay for a system like this?" And what we're doing now is investigating all of those questions. What are the sources of funds? What are the sources of funds at the state and local level that we could apply for? What is it that we could do to establish something called an enhanced infrastructure financing district where we could capture some of the tax increment and turn it back to this program to get this online and pay for other transportation facilities? We're also looking at partnerships with the development community, with the Cronky Group, with the Clippers to see what they could help contribute to bring this forward. And then how can we also leverage the new innovative strategies for public-private partnerships to bring in developers that can help build the system? And they're really interested in clamoring to do that. So we're investigating implementation strategies, and we're working on refining the project so we could get, again, better cost estimates, a better plan, can tell you exactly where stations would go, where intermodal facilities would go, where maintenance facility has to be located here to be able to serve this. And so we're doing all that work. And once we come up with a plan, we will be, we will come to you. You will not be surprised. And that is the plan that we will be studying in an EIR. When you go through an EIR, you have to study all the types of environmental impacts, from traffic to air quality to, you name it, noise, construction impact. So we're not going to be moving so fast that we take, we'll take full advantage of all of these analyses, and we'll be sharing with this, with you, with you, the studies all along the way. So again, we did our scoping meeting. We received only 28 comment letters, which is pretty amazing. We have also been talking with all of the agencies that would be interested, again, Metro and other transportation agencies, to bring them on board. Next slide. And what we're planning on doing is as we get, go through this project definition work, we're going to come out and do workshops. We'll do design workshops. We'll hold focus groups. And we're hoping that we can get enough of a project definition that come the winter or maybe early spring, we'll have a draft EIR out, and we'll be back to share with you the results of that. So we are very, very excited about this, and I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you. Isn't it amazing? Can you think of anyone been to Disneyland? Someone been to Disneyland? Can you imagine a monorail? A monorail in Inglewood coming from Florence, going down Prairie? Going back Manchester into Market Street? It's amazing. But the key is, there's visionaries. We're coming up with ways. You complain of traffic? We're working on methods to do that. But Ms. Trifiletta was willing to take question or comment. I hope she'll take question or comments. But more importantly, it's up to you. Only 28 people out of... Only 28 people out of over 40,000 in the city of Inglewood responded. There's more than that in here. So Ms. Trifaleti will be here a little later. You'll be here after the town hall meeting. If you would like to share some information and may coordinate with each other to give us your input regarding how do you see the first mile being at Florence and Market Street to the last mile being somewhere around Century and Prairie? Ultimately, if it does pan out, money permits, we also would like to extend that all the way to 120th and Crenshaw. So we have the Green Line Station, and then we have the Crenshaw LAX Station, but it all depends on your input, and then the mayor working on getting the capital improvements, capital funding that's needed for joint-private partnership. Couple of questions or comments? We will take them now. Again, remind you, staff will be holding the mic. We just ask that you just make your comments, so that way we can move on to the next presenter. Anyone like to make any questions or comments at this time? Oh, there's one, two. Okay. I see you, Diane. And then we'll get you out of here, Ms. Trifaleti. Raise your hand. Diane, she didn't, he didn't see you. Thank you. And please stand when it's time to speak, so we can see you.
I had just a question about the, you know, you have the cemetery and the hospital right in that same general area. How does, have you considered traffic from funerals and emergency vehicles going through that area?
Absolutely. When we do the traffic analysis, we look at all the land uses, and that's all in there. We look at all the build-out of the future development. We look at all of that to figure out, you know, what the traffic impacts would be, especially during the construction period, and how, what we can do to mitigate any disruptions to, you know, during construction periods. But at the end of the day, we're also looking at the ridership to see who would be willing to ride this system, and how do we design it in a way that is attractive to get as many riders as we possibly can? Because if we're going to make this kind of investment, we want to make it so that it's attractive for people to use. So yes.
Okay. I saw the gentleman, if we can get the mic. If you could stand, is that, you can handle it? I know you're, you got your cane. Can you stand all right? Okay, right up here. Thank you.
Yeah. Transportation considerations for, transportation consideration for people who live in the neighborhoods south of Century and east of Crenshaw to get to this fabulous entertainment complex. Do we have to get in our cars, drive over to 120th, and then, if you do 120th? But how do, are there going to be many transportation, transportation in the neighborhoods to get people to the main transportation arteries? Thank you.
That's an excellent question. And, you know, we, as I said at the outset, we're working on a plan because if we were to build a train and get all the funding, that's not going to come on for a long time. And so we need to be prepared for opening day. And so what we're looking at are satellite lots, satellite shuttles. You mentioned something that's a micro-transit system. And then when we were to have shuttles like that, where did the shuttles go? Where do they stage for people to get into the stadium? So we're working on all of those details. I think, well, maybe we could, if you would permit, another opportunity to come back and really unveil the event programs as soon as we get those a little bit more formulated. But thank you for your question.
So time permitting, in our next town hall meeting next year, we'll see how much progress has developed in order for her to come back and continue this. But can you imagine already Hawthorne Airport already has FAA approval of charter flights? Already. That's why if you don't get on board now and identify what vision do you want to see in order to suppress this energy, you could see it's going to compound. We already have Uber and Lyft, but those are individual operators. What we're concerned about, we want something constant, in this case, a public-private partnership. And that's where Metro comes in very well. So let's give her a hand for that presentation, please. Are you enjoying this? Are you getting information? All right. So let's move on a little bit further because we talked about the magnitude of various things coming into the city. There was issue raised earlier regarding traffic. You heard the mayor also talk about the value of property. The value of homes have soared to the point that now, is it even doable for the city to even work with developers to do our fair share of having what is called low and affordable housing? Because not everyone can afford market-rate housing. And so therefore, we have a legal obligation to be able to accommodate those individuals. And so when we have new development coming in, we also reach out to those developers to do their fair share because we, as a city of Inglewood, will continue to do our fair share. Today, I'm going to have you come and let Mr. Hargender Zing, who's our, actually, he's the deputy assistant city manager, and he will be talking to us about affordable housing, past, present, and the future. Give him a hand, please.
Thank you so much for having me. Okay. Good evening. I'm glad that you guys invited me to come speak before you, and I get to talk about something I'm very passionate about, which is delivering affordable housing to the residents of the city of Inglewood. But before I begin my presentation, I want to acknowledge how much the mayor, Councilman Franklin, and the city council have made the issue of affordable housing a priority for city staff. And it's really important. When you make it a priority, that means we get to set aside some of the other things that are in front of us and make sure that we can work with developers and anybody who wants to bring affordable housing into the city and really make it a priority. That priority led to the development of one of our latest programs to provide homebuyer assistance to low and moderate-income families. Next slide. But before we talk about our latest program, it's important to talk about what the city has achieved over the last few decades in affordable housing. And sometimes that can be overlooked. Now, I'm going to run through slide after slide of the developments that we've done over the last four decades. I don't want to bore you guys, so I'm just going to read through some of the larger developments that we've done. 1976, Inglewood Meadows, 199 units. 1977, Regent Plaza, 107 affordable units. Next slide. 1997, West Side Residence Hall, 301 units. 2004, Osage Senior Villas, 91 units. Next slide. 2011, U.S. Vets, 196 units. 2011, Regency Towers, 104 units. 2013, Regent Square Apartments, 145 units. And our newest that we just brought online in 2018, Path Eucalyptus, which is 40 affordable Now, what can be lost in a listing like that is how much the city has accelerated bringing affordable units online. From 1969 to 2010, that's 41 years. We brought on 864 units. That's 21 units a year. From 2011 to 2018, eight short years, we brought on 659 units. That's 82 units a year. Under the mayor, Mayor Butts, Councilman Franklin, and the rest of city council, we have four times the amount of development that we've ever had in the past. That level of development for a city our size is actually unheard of. You hear those kinds of numbers from cities much bigger than us with a lot more resources. But we really have made a dedicated effort in the last eight years to do everything possible to bring affordable units on as quickly as we possibly can. So what impact have we had on affordable housing? Next slide. Next slide. Total affordable rental units, 2,846. That means 12.4% of every rental unit in the city has been made affordable directly from the actions of the city. The next, on the next slide here is the owner-occupied units. The total number of families that have been assisted to either purchase their first home or to stay in the home that they already own, 446. Now, we just don't want to talk about what we, past accomplishments. We also need to talk about what's in store for the future. Because the amount of units that we're bringing online, we want to ramp that up even more if possible. So right now, we're in discussions to bring 170 affordable units that are in various phases of implementation. This is a high priority. And one of the reasons why myself, as a deputy to the city manager, is presenting this is because the development of units is being run through the city manager's office. And that's to show how high of a priority it is for us, that we work all the way at the very top, so we can cut the red tape for developers that want to bring units. We can talk to the various departments and make sure that we can solve any problems and negotiate with them directly. We meet every two weeks on a regular basis, and the only topic that we discuss when we have housing, economic and community development, finance, and our legal counsel, is how to bring additional affordable housing online. Those are regular standing meetings that the city has, only to address this specific issue. One of the programs that's emerged from these affordable housing meetings is the homebuyer assistance program. The goal of this program is to help low and moderate-income families purchase a home in Inglewood. So I'm just going to quickly outline the current program that we're working on, which is in addition to working with developers on bringing other units online. A program description. This is funded with $2 million in housing bond funds, so there's no impact to the general fund. These are a separate set of funds that we have specifically to address affordable housing. The maximum mortgage assistance that we'll be providing is $350,000. The maximum purchase price of the property is $600,000. And there'll be no repayment requirement if you follow the program guidelines. Now, there are a few restrictions. You need to qualify for a conventional mortgage of $250,000 to participate. There's a minimum down payment requirement of $7,500. And you may not have owned a home in the last three years. On the, on the chart above is the household income, which is the maximum that you can make to participate in this program. So a household size of one, that limit would be $58,200. But for a household size of four, that would be $83,150. That's 120% of the area medium income. So we definitely wanted to make sure that the largest group of Inglewood residents could definitely participate in this program. So it's not just for very low income. It goes all the way up to moderate as well. I want to quickly talk about the selection process that we'll be going through. We're going to be selecting people through a lottery. Preference is definitely going to be given to Inglewood residents. We define Inglewood residents two ways. One is people currently living in the city of Inglewood, and the next is persons that have lived in the city for three of the last five years. If you have been somebody who's lived in the city of Inglewood for a long period of time, and you recently felt that you couldn't afford to stay in the city and you had to leave, we want to make sure that you can take advantage of this program as well and come back and be a resident of Inglewood again. This program in its current form is expected to help five to six households purchase a The market for this program. Currently, there are 34 properties for sale in Inglewood that are below the $600,000 maximum purchase price. That's 18 single-family homes and 16 condos and townhouses. That's a relatively large population of properties for you to pick from if you're involved in this property. A lot of times when we've seen programs like this run in other cities, the type of home that you could actually afford if you qualify for the program is not somewhere where most people would want to live. So one of the reasons that we wanted to have 600,000 be the limit, the upper limit of what you could purchase a property, we want to make sure that, you know, you're going to be able to get a quality piece of property that will help you gain wealth and pass on to your family members in the future. The next steps, we will be advertising the program on the city website and local newspapers. We'll be reaching out to local real estate agents to partner with them. We'll be reaching out to lenders as well, too. And we'll determine a submittal timeline that'll be released to the public when the program is fully completed, which we expect to happen in the next two to three months. And that concludes my presentation. So if there's any questions?
Sure. Give it up. Okay. Again, I want to thank you for your cooperation, and we'll continue that cooperation. And also remind you, this is being, I see you, young lady. Again, I want to remind you that this is being recorded, so there's a lot of information you saw on the screen. Don't hesitate. Give us a few weeks, so we'll have it broadcasted, and that way you can view it at your, at your leisure in your own home, and you can rewind it as well. Now, we will take a few question or comments. I see the young lady's hand. If you'd be so kind to stand, the staff will hold the mic and make your comments.
Yes. Good evening. In terms of affordable housing for, say, your police officers, your other service workers like firemen and teachers, are there any programs in order for them to be able, because they will not meet these income ranges? I mean, there are incomes a little bit higher, but for them to be able to live in the city in which they work and to be able to afford to live here?
So right now, our current program is for moderate income. That's pretty much the highest limit that we could go right now to bring forth affordable housing and have the biggest population possible. So we don't have anything specific to firefighters or police at this time.
Again, income base is a key. I think also what's important to understand is the fact that we need our federal government support. HUD sets the values of your income to be eligible. So because our property values have skyrocketed, it has a direct correlation with the rent, supply and demand. And therefore, in order for there to be enough subsidy, we need the federal government's and state assistance in order to help accommodate those, those that are less fortunate, that do not have the affordable income that you may be able to handle at this point. Couple of other question or comments? Wow, seeing none. Ms. Hargender, thank you very much again. Give him another hand, please. So guess what? The balance of this meeting is au revoir. You had me for three PowerPoint presentations, and you know when I speak, what do we do? Get your, take notes. Make sure you get your pencils in hand and be ready. Before we do that, I wanted to give enough time for people to come into our meetings, and I would like for you to please give them your courtesy appreciation for their support. Please help me recognize out in the field, Mr. Artie Fields, our city manager. So he and the mayor are the dynamic duo with the council. His assistant, Ms. Tanisha Johnson. And you saw Hargender Zing, who's also the deputy assistant to the city manager. I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize our lieutenant, David Salcedo, and all the Inglewood police officers. If you'd please give them a hand as well. And then the last presenters for staff, I want to recognize Thomas Bun and his video crew from the city of Inglewood. Now, for the volunteers. These are commissioners, your neighbors, that said that I am willing to serve in order for the benefit to help improve the quality of life for the city of Inglewood. For the civil service board review, Mr. Gene Eldrich, please raise, stand or raise your hands, I know where you are. Housing advisory board, Cheryl McLennan. Cheryl, there she is. Human affairs commission, Dorothy Cole. Park and traffic commission, Barbara Brooks. Where's Barbara? There she is. Planning and zoning board, Terry L. Coleman. And we have several individuals that also we recognize as block club captains or representatives for, in District Four. So the, Cheryl McLennan, I have you listed for Second Avenue Block Club. There you go. Cheryl Gwynne, the Century Heights Neighborhood Watch Association. Then Dorothy Cole's Van S. Spinning Avenue Block Club Association. So in So, I recognize them as well. I think that is it at this point. Now, where the rubber meets the road. As you know, when I, as your council member, do presentations, I focus specifically on the nuts and bolts of our district. There's too many times where we can talk about the warm and fuzzy things, about what's going on in the city, and the mayor does a very distinguished job, very impressive job about it. But now, it comes to the point about neighbor to neighbor. I want to know what's going on. And so, I have three PowerPoint presentations I want to present to you. If I can get the first one regarding Lockhaven Community Pilot Parking Program. So, if you live from 104th Street on the north to Imperial Highway on the south, to Crenshaw on the east and Prairie on the west, would you raise your hand? Okay, again, I want to emphasize, we're talking about Crenshaw on the east, Prairie on the west, 104th on the north, and Imperial Highway on the south. This is for you. This is for you, and this is where I live as well. Our area, if you're not familiar with the Lockhaven community, we do not have the luxury as Imperial Village, Century Heights, Inglewood knows. We only have one-sided parking. You have two-sided parking, and you take it for granted. We would love it. Unfortunately, there has been such a major issue about parking that has actually created the Hatfields and McCoys, if anyone knows anything about them. Ugliness. Neighbor gets mad at neighbor because you took that parking space in front of my house. So, at the last council, the last town hall meeting I gave in the summer of 2017, I've had a number of block club meetings, group associations in that area called Lockhaven, saying, "We want to talk to you, councilman, about expanding, about expanding the consideration of additional parking for the city." So, in November 2017, the residents said, "I want to make it happen." But I had to go before, as you'll see, the Public Works Engineers, the LA County Fire Department, the Inglewood Police Department, and said, "My neighbors say they want two-sided parking." Engineers, what do you say? Public safety, what do you say? And they said, "Nothing beats a failure but a try." So, they narrowed the scope of the area for consideration. That area was identified by them to be 105th Street and 106th Street, from Yukon, Morning Sinai on the east, to Prairie on the west. Two blocks each street. That being said, they wanted to make sure that they have an opportunity to weigh in on this. So, what we did, we created what is called a pilot parking program. The engineers had to come there, and we actually had to have two surveys, just so you know. The engineers came, they did their surveys, and they said, "You know what? Because the streets are only 26 feet wide, we're going to have to do some redesigning of that street." So, to do that, they said, "We're going to have to come up with new pullouts or pockets by painting some of the curb red in order to allow the traffic to go back through in and out." And we also had to weigh in a consideration about, okay, in event of emergency responses, how does a vehicle travel through there when there's going to be two-sided parking and the width may only be about 12 feet? That is a big concern. The residents said, "Give us a chance." So, from November of last year until now, they are, in fact, dealing with two-sided parking. So, there's 100 resident households that live on those four blocks. Rather than me, as your council member, making arbitrary decision about reducing it, terminating it, I want to find out from the residents, "What do you think about it?" And then, and the reason why I'm doing that is because there was a tidal wave from the other residents saying that, "Look, I live 107th. How come I can't get that?" And it went all the way up to 113th Street from Crenshaw to Prairie and says, "Come on, let's have equity here." So, I said, "Well, before we consider the expansion of that program, let's go back to where the rubber met the road, where those families had a chance to make their decision." Of those 100, we sent out surveys. We got 39 responses. Nine of them said, and nine households out of the 100 says, "We want it. And here's why we want it. Opportunity to get parking space on the street when they come home from work to school, can invite visitors and have places for them to park. It's convenient. I can get away now from tandem parking." Anybody know what tandem parking is? One car parked in front of the other. So, who's going to leave? It's got to be the first one out. "Oh, man, I got to go to the grocery store, and wife, can you please move your vehicle out of the way because I want to drive my car?" That's tandem parking. And then, the other one about stopping residents from having to park their vehicles. Because parking is such a premium, people are now trying to become concrete jungles for us, and they are taking their front yards, pouring cement slabs, and then parking on those slabs. And in some cases, they're just driving right on the grass, but now it's dirt. So, we said, nine of them said, "We wanted it." Thirty said, "Get rid of it." Get rid of it, why? The number-one reason, public safety. Too many close calls where my little Johnny was trying to go across the street, or because we have to provide for the accommodations for some person to get by me. I had to pull in front of someone else's driveway, and they're trying to back out of the driveway. It was difficult for the police response and the fire department to respond. And then, also, the other issue had to do with, the neighbors on the next block said, "Ooh, looky here, here's an opportunity for me now to say, 'I live on 104th, I'm going to park my car, a very seldom drive, and put it on 105th. I'm on 107th, I'm going to park my car on 106 because I now have extra space.'" And then, others saying, "You know what? I just like the fact, I don't have to deal with tandem parking anymore, so, honey, instead of we fighting over who's going to be in first, who's going to leave first, I'm just going to leave your car out on the street, and then that way, there's only one car in the driveway. And then, also, that way, the guests could come, and they could park on our driveway." Well, needless to say, that did create a concern. Then comes the next area, which now has broadened the spectrum. So, now that I got this flavor, and while that survey's coming in, I said, "Is now time for me to go ahead and move to the expansion portion?" I have to tell you, it's amazing how you think you know your neighbor. Because when we deal with the issues involving, we're now going to expand, get, weigh in on expanding the expansion. It was amazing, even within the same household, there couldn't be a consensus of agreement about whether we wanted two-sided parking versus one-sided parking, which is currently, what this group currently has, which goes, again, from 107th to the north, to Imperial Highway on the south, to Crenshaw and Prairie. So, we did another survey. Because we wanted two separate surveys for two separate evaluations, because, remember, the ones on 105th and 106th, they've been living with this since November. We are proposing, based on the residents' input, about whether or not we're going to expand the program. 212 households responded, and of the 212 households responded, 122 said, "We are in favor of it." The opportunity to get the parking, again, on the street, several of the residents have said, "I have to park blocks away, just to park my car on the public street and then walk home." Others were saying that, "I now have extra parking would be available for my guests, so then that would work. It's a major convenience, part of that tandem parking, which we talked about before." And the other one was, residents would stop and park, no longer, we'd reduce the people parking on the lawns. And the highlight for of all was, it was an increase in parking on public curbside. On the other hand, there was 90 residents that said, "Please don't even weigh that as an option. It's unsafe." Again, they stressed the public safety risk, the fact that people in our areas are now converting their garages into housing accommodations, and they're using, their guests have, their people that reside in those garages now have vehicles, which they're now creating more parking challenges for us. For some reason, they weigh in that people like to now get from Crenshaw to Prairie, going down our blocks, and they speed, and potential case of accidents. And one key fact, the street is not wide enough. That was what they were saying. They went even further and said, "Driver parks cars in front of your house and is picked up by another car, and they take off." The other one is, many vehicles only move on street-sweeping days. One car will take two spots, as another example. And then, the other one, and most significant one, the plan would hurt our community. So, we weighed this out, and the two-sided parking continued to be an ongoing saga. But, again, I stressed, the ones that wanted the expansion of the parking program to two-site it in the area other than 105th and 106, the Public Works Department, the engineers, the police department, and the fire and safety did another assessment. Of those 122 that said that they wanted two-sided parking, the majority of those votes came on two streets. Two streets. Now, keep in mind, from Prairie to Crenshaw, that's one block, one street alone is four blocks long. But only two single blocks, from 107th Street to Imperial Highway, from Crenshaw to Prairie, said, "I want two-sided parking." And the majority of them did. And I will commend those residents that took the liberty. By state law, I am limited. I'm only allowed to mail out 199 letters saying, "This is what is being weighed." These residents literally created their own petition, and they went door to door to door, block to block to block, to get those 122 votes. But when it settled, it's only two single blocks, and the two blocks are not continuous. There's blocks in between them. Therefore, the final result is, we are not going to expand the two-sided parking. We are not going to expand the two-sided parking. In addition, in addition, we are going to take away the two-sided parking on 105th and 106. And we are going to convert all those curbs that was painted red. We got to change all those signs all over again. And so, we're going to be notifying the residents on around October 31st, and it's not Halloween, that we're going to notify them, we're going back to one-sided parking. One-sided parking. But that's not the only part of the survey reflection that we received. Some people said, "You know what? I want to weigh in on another option." And another option is, I want to weigh in on the consideration of having permit parking. By having permit parking, then in turn, I'm in a better position of indicating who can park on this block, because now it's permitted. I am not at liberty to say, "You got it." It's where you, as a resident, you, as a neighbor, have to make that decision and say, "This is what I want to do." Outside, on the information table, there are forms. If you decide you want a two-sided parking, and I will make this global for District Four, even if you want to weigh in other areas, and you want to weigh in on two-sided parking, get one of those forms, so you'll know what is the criteria and the process to have it done. Thinking of being a visionary, we know that there's a strong possibility we're going to have an arena, an NBA sports arena. Those that live where I live, in the Lockhaven community, have to be mindful that people will not want to pay that $25 to park, which is the current rate now at the form. They're going to look for your street. The other concern is going to be that if you have permit parking, if anyone remembers back in the days when we had the form with the Clippers, the Kings were playing, all on the west side of Prairie, in that area, there was permit parking, and it still exists today. That may be something you want to get started on and weigh in, but it does require an educational piece. That's the end of this segment. Thank you very much for that portion. Now, I got to give my technician ready for the next one. How many of you? We are not taking Q and A. Not in this. But anyone that wants to talk to me about this, in all of my presentations, I don't take Q and A because I talk too much. And because I have so much information to give you, and so little time to give it, that I will stay here afterwards like I normally do. You have also, I see the hand that raised my, raised the hand, knows exactly how to reach me, and Ms. Claudette Matthews. So, that's not an issue, that we can't get your question of concern answered. But you're here today because of what the agenda says. And the agenda says, we have issues involving the quality of life of the city of Inglewood, but more importantly, District Four. Now, I'm going to go global with the city. How many of you come to our regular town hall meetings? Thank you. Put your hands down. How many of you was at the town hall meeting when we did a survey on April 25th? A retail clerk survey, because I did a presentation, and I had forms for you to fill out and say, "I want to know where you shop." Please? So, I'm now here to give you the results. But the way I'm going to do this is that I'm going to share with you specifically the results only for the top three to five percentages, or top percentages of each category. If you are interested to find out, "Well, how come I didn't see my store in there?" I have the master list for every category. And if you want to find out how your store fare, just see me afterwards, and I'll share with you what the master actually said. So, I always have to do my disclaimer to let people know right up front that be mindful that this is a District Four town hall meeting. Therefore, I cannot weigh in the full value of how the whole city may think. I cannot weigh in the value to identify that this is how the council thinks. I weighed in on those residents, whether you're District Four or not, you cast your ballot in each category. And because of that, again, it was on April 25th. Does anyone know the significance of why I did that in April? It's because in May, I purposely go to the International Shoppers Convention, and I prepare a meeting in advance to go and see the shopping center owners in our district and the entire city. I wanted to make sure I had an arsenal in my pocket to say, "You're not just going to bring up any 7-Eleven, fast food, discount store. I'm telling you, here's what our residents say we want." So, I'm speaking on behalf of District Four residents specifically, saying, "This is the kind of quality of life we're looking for." So, again, I'm just stressing to you that, again, I took the top three out of the five, roughly, if they're 10 percent or higher is what I identified. Are you ready for your survey? Department stores, anchor tenants. There was, not everyone decided they wanted to vote or give way in on every category. But in this particular category, there was 153 votes that was cast that said, "My first choice to have a department store, an anchor store in the city of Inglewood is Nordstrom's." Then, they wanted J.C. Penney's, Coles, and Macy's. Those are the top stores. Electronics or computers, 144 votes were cast, and the number one was Best Buy. Then comes Apple, and then Fry's Electronics. So, now, there comes to another category called, what is defined as fine dining. 237 people, 237 votes were cast. You know people are hungry. 237 people said, "I like BJ's Restaurant, Houston's, Harold &amp; Bell's, Ruth Chris Steakhouse, McCormick &amp; Smith's." I didn't hear anything about any other restaurant that's considered. I didn't hear anything about any other restaurant that's considered fine dining, that's top of that list. But I want you to be made aware. Then it came to footwear. 157 total votes said that, here is the footwear, if this stores was here, this is where I'd go to. Macy's number one, DSW, Nordstrom's Rack, and then Nordstrom's. Then, the next category is family fun centers. 93 votes was on the cast. Remember 200 and something for food? Now, 93 for, for family fun. Three cat, three selected, Dave &amp; Buster's, Buffalo Wild Wings, and Chuck E. Cheese. Where do you go grocery shopping? What's your favorite? The number one. 190 votes were cast, and they said, Trader Joe's, Whole Foods Market, Sprout Farms Market, Stater Brothers Market. They're not here, are they? And that's why we go shopping at the International Shoppers Convention. Now, we talk about lodging. 157 votes were cast, saying, "If we had this hotel here, I would go to the Marriott, Emery C. Suites, Hilton, or the Sheraton." And I might add, they may be the same brand, but it's a different name of, of their market, so don't be surprised. Well, they owned by the same company. That's not the issue. This is the brand of their choice. Now it's time to shop. Furniture, home accessories. 171 votes were cast. Of the 171 votes, the top one was Home Goods, Living Spaces, TJ Maxx, Tuesday Morning, and Ashley Furniture Home Store. Do you guys feel this? You feel that you're making these votes? You feel part of that, that way it was cast? Okay, the next category, office stationary party supplies. 140 votes were cast, and of the 140, Office Depot, Office Max, then comes Party City, FedEx or Kinko's, and then the last one on this category, again, Hallmark. Now, some people liked to be hobby, hobby shops. They liked to do their own designs and decorating. Out of 97 that did cast their vote, Michael's was number one. Joann Fabrics, follow that. Then comes Hobby Lobby Art and Craft Store. And I'll be the first to tell you, I had to reach out to Ms. Matthews, "What in the name are these stores? I have never heard of them." Whether it came to women's apparel, or, or these stores, arts and crafts, I was just, I was just dumbfounded, and there's many others. Particularly when you look at the whole category. Next category, now we're dealing with family sit-down restaurants. Out of 180 votes, again, 200 and something for the, for the other one, now it's 180 for the family restaurants. Applebee's is number one. Marie Callender's, Mimi's Cafe, and then Golden Corral. Just so you know. Women's apparel. 122 votes were cast. Number one, Nordstrom Rack, followed by Kohl's and Steinmark. That was women. Now men. 103 votes were cast. Again, Macy's, H&amp;M, Urban Outfitters. That was the top vote-getters for that category. Children's apparel. 122 votes were cast. Number one, Target, Gap Kids, Carter's, and The Children's Place. And then the other category was, 55 votes were cast for pet stores. Now, obviously, those are into critters or animals, they into pet stores. I'm not in them. I, I grew up and out of fish, tropical fish. Now, if I can't eat them, I don't keep them. But this is pet stores, and some people like them, including reptiles. But you can go to Petco or Pets Mark. Now, let's try to get away from home. Let's go to the movie theaters. 133 votes were cast, and they said, "I like AMC, Cinemark, and Arch Light." Those got the top votes. So, when I did this survey several years ago, I was amazed on how people had a lot of brick and mortar stores. This is where we wanna be. This is what we, we like to see. But you know, like you heard the presentations earlier today, times have changed. I have to tell you, I was literally flabbergasted, overwhelmed to realize how you shop online. 133 votes cast, Amazon.com, Overstock.com, Target.com, and Wayfair.com got the top billing. But there had to be at least 15 or so that I had in that category long. Had no idea that your tax dollar, in setting, in your living room, or your, your office, in your office, that you just took the sales tax away from this city. Because it is at the point of trans, transaction, where that product is located, that's where the sales tax goes. So when you holler about, "I got this pothole in front of my house," I'm gonna ask you, "Do you shop online?" Keep that in mind. Then there was a, a category, and I'm not gonna read all of them, but people had their own specialties of preference, whether it's gardening supplies, Christian church facilities, do-it-yourselfers, their preferred clothing attire, like Neiman, Neiman Marcus outlets, and B.C., B.G., Max, Azria. So, those are the things. That concludes the survey. What do you think? Are you there? All right, we're gonna redo the last one, a little more detailed, and truly, I need your cooperation, 'cause I'm doing a double, triple activity here, so let's see if I can do this right. Let me know when you're ready, sir. So now, my standard, pen in hand, find some paper to write on, 'cause we're gonna be talking about District 4 specifically. Things you may have not even thought about, other things you said, "Well, I knew something was going on, and wasn't quite for sure what they were doing with that." Now you're gonna find out. So, the first thing I'm gonna do is do a little housekeeping, and let you know that this, again, is the talking point. As you can see, I'm gonna be talking about Inglewood News. When you see that sign comes up there, that means I'm going to change the category. So the first thing we're gonna talk about has to do with job opportunities. With job opportunities, how many of you take the time that you are aware that District 4, through the help of Ms. Claudette Matthews, raise your hand, Ms. Matthews, give her hand back there, please, has an email list that you provided your personal information to say, "When jobs become available..." "I don't need the job, but I got this lazy son of mine." Or, "I got an uncle that, that, that just won't get off, or can't even find a job, and doesn't, in some cases, don't know how to find the job." They say, "If you find something in District 4, would you please be so kind to let us know?" Because we wanna make sure that, we wanna provide them an opportunity, and hopefully they'll become a career, give them a career opportunity. So, if you're interested, I need for you to make sure that you go to the information table, again, see Ms. Matthews, and say, "I may not be on your list, or I'm not on your list, but I wanna make sure I get on the list, because you know somebody that, given the opportunity, will make a fervent effort for employment." And this will give them that opportunity, and that we will continue to feed. The only downside that Ms. Matthews and I deal with, we like feedback. Every now and then, we'll hear from a church, we'll hear from a block club captain, but we never hear from the people that actually benefited from it. And so, if you're those individuals that have benefited, we would like to hear success stories. We would like to hear the fact that you've been unemployed, or you've been homeless, and all of a sudden, now you got this job, and now you're stable. Because that's the whole purpose of being able to help neighbor helping neighbor. So, next category. I wanna talk a little bit about emergency numbers. So I have shared with you, if anyone knows anything about District 4, we provide you a special list of all the different emergency numbers, whether it's street lights out, potholes, sidewalk issues, curbs need to be done, scavengers, all that kinda activity, we have a special flyer we provide you out there in the foyer, and we wanna make sure that you seize the moment, and that you, you get that. The other area I wanna say, you heard about the advancement of tech, of the city moving forward. If you do not take the time to see what's going on around you, you're gonna get consumed by all the moving parts. But if you would like to know, and I'm a victim, that I'm going to go to the grocery store to get a can of soda, milk and eggs, and, for the family, and, "Oh, God, where'd all this traffic come from? Oh, now we got a lane closure." I didn't know that. The city has a special traffic alert system. It's on the city's website, and the city's website is www.citofinglewood.org. Again, there's a flyer out there. I encourage you to pick it up, because one of the things I now use it for, it gives me traffic alerts for form events. It gives me the alert when there's gonna be filming done, and so therefore, they may block off the streets. It also lets me know if there's a water main break. Where is it? So I can avoid it. I don't wanna go in that sunken hole. But, and also, it gives you general notification that when the city part, cities having different activities, whether they're police activities, the parks and wrecks, and this, this weekend, we're having a heritage festival, heritage festival, right at the, by City Hall, that you're welcome to come and join us. Information's out there as well to pick that up. But if you're interested in that, I definitely encourage you to make sure you take the time to get that. Now, I wanna move on to the next category. Am I five? I wanna talk now about the new RV commercial vehicle ordinance. What the heck is that? There's a new ordinance that went into law, effective September 1st, that is now looking in your blocks, your residential blocks, and they're focusing on oversized vehicles, including RVs, commercial vehicles, trailers, semi-trailers, house cars. There's a special code or ordinance that's now put in place, particularly those commercial vehicles that have a gross weight of over 10,000 pounds parked in front of your house. And I have to tell you, again, I, I admit, I live in the Lockhaven community, neighbors, but when I have a vehicle that you go and get the food truck parked in front of your house, can you imagine the width of that truck, and you gotta now back out of your driveway? Is it safe or not? So, this is the kind of information that we had to reach out to you and say, "Look, enough is enough, neighbor, because you're now impacting the quality of life of me, and my family, and my neighbors. So, you need to find a place to park those vehicles. Any of these commercial vehicles is gonna be an issue." So I want you to be made aware of that one. Again, that information's outside. Next, how many of you know that we're now dealing with, the airport has now under development? LAX has, now has some of the southern, the southern runways are now under repair, and they're also doing, they're doing maintenance repairs. If you didn't get this flyer, you definitely need to get it. If you live in Century Heights, if you live in Lockhaven, if you live in Imperial Village, welcome aboard to the thundering roar from midnight to 6:00 a.m. in the morning for these next several months. And then you felt, "Why is these planes flying overhead on land? How come they don't take it off at sea?" It's because they're doing maintenance. So, I have, the sheet will now tell you when they're doing it, what days they're doing it, so you can get enough cotton balls in your ears, and you can adjust accordingly. Now, the next item, Imperial Highway. Everyone knows Imperial Highway. From Van S. on the east to Prairie on the west, construction has begun. Construction has begun. So, everyone knows, those that come to the Town Hall meetings, you understand that, as of July of this year, we now have a contract approved, engineers are out in the street, but there's a process. So, the project will consist of, um, street curb gutter, driveways, aprons, sidewalks, all that's being done. Currently, two things are happening. They're doing what is called potholing, or boring, digging holes in the asphalt. They have to find out where utility lines are, where the, um, the fiber actor cabling is, and those kinds of concerns. Excuse me. But, write this down, in the next three weeks, from September the 10th to the 28th, the contractor will be working on the north side of Imperial Highway, the north side of Imperial Highway, from Van S. Avenue to La Moli Avenue. They're going to start to remove the sidewalks, and also, the new bus pad at Arteth Avenue and Imperial Highway. Plus, there's also gonna be a concrete pavement west of Crenshaw Boulevard, north side. Why am I telling you this? Traffic alert. Traffic alert. This project is gonna continue on, just so you know, until March 2019, before we have the entire project complete. You have to take care of what's in the street, bring, take care of what's on top of the street. And that's what we're working on as we speak. I also wanna talk to you regarding about Century Boulevard. There's multiple phases of Century Boulevard. We're coming to the conclusion of Phase 1. Phase 1, currently, we're doing insulation of the storm drain system on the north side of Century Boulevard, between Fifth Avenue and Van S. Avenue. Stream drain, drains. So there's a cycle, things have to be done. And different agencies play a certain role of what they're gonna do. For example, Southern California Edison, they're relocating their underground power lines on the north side of Century Boulevard, between Third Avenue and Van S. Avenue. Southern California Edison, so they're doing their thing. And that completion should occur by October 31st. Those are the first, that phase I just gave you should be through by the October 31st. The second phase is already commenced, and this is Southern California Gas, known as Sempra. They're now starting to boring holes in the cement for the insulation of their new gas lines on the north side of Century Boulevard, from Dodie Avenue to Hawthorne Boulevard. So if you came from Costco after you gassed up your car, and you jumped on Yukon, you was gonna go west on Century Boulevard approaching Prairie, you will find lane closures. Because they're now taking over the lanes to do their boring of those holes, and I'm, when we're saying holes, we're talking like three feet in diameter, in order for them to run that, that pipeline, to get ready to put in their, their new gas lines. So, just wanted you to be made aware of that. That project also is planning to continue to March 2019. So, when you start seeing all that traffic, you start seeing all of the stuff still going on, when is it ever gonna end? You've now been informed. There's a plan. There's a plan. Now I wanna talk to you also regarding the District 4. You may not realize it, but as a council member, your representative, I'm also a lobbyist. And as a lobbyist, what I, I've learned to do in my 15 years in office, is being able to work with the city staff to encourage them, when we have this pool of money, that I get a nice chunk of that money for District 4. And so, you lobby to make sure that, okay, you want these potholes fixed? You want Imperial Highway fixed? I gotta lobby. And it takes a while, in some cases, you got, we're getting impatient, where it took me over three years to get the $5 million I needed to do Imperial Highway. But it's lobbying. And so, I now wanna share with you some of the lobbying that we've been doing, or I've been doing anyway. Oh, I'm sorry, I got another project to talk about. I wanna jump back. Let me see here, I lost my space. 12, Aaron? Too fast for myself. Hold up. Are you still with me? You enjoying this? All right, so, um, I wanna talk specifically about what's going on as we speak. For those individuals that are actually dealing with issues involving street repairs, um, it's interesting how the, you heard the old saying, "Don't let the Joneses get you down." They got it, how come I can't get it? It's all about the money. Where does a pot of money come from, and, and how is it appropriated? So... So there's what is called the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Money, which primarily focuses on low affordable income housing. And then also there's an area called non-CDBG, and that's gas tax. So when you, if you're not pumping your gas at Costco or some of these other gas stations in Inglewood, you're now cannot complain to me why I don't have money to fix your street. Because that's the gas tax. So on this particular map, and the map's right behind you when you leave here, there's a number of streets that are being done this year's budget. There's many of those streets that fall under the CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, that is in what my neighborhood, Lock Haven. Are you enjoying our streets, neighbors? Lock Haven. We have been without them for some time, but we're only doing the streets right now that are going east-west. I'll work on Dodie and Yukon in my next year's budget, lobbying. But also Imperial Village, there's a couple of streets up there as well that has been in bad shape. In fact, there's a difference when you look at the map, you're going to see some that says, "We're going to slurry seal." In the Lock Haven area, they literally took a small, actually they filled up the potholes that is in the streets, or if there's a tree root, they'll cut the tree root down. But then afterwards, they put a very thin layer of asphalt liquid, and it's called slurry seal. That preserves that particular street. It's in good shape overall. But if they didn't use that, that it would cause the street to deteriorate. And in our neighborhood, we're dealing with a lot of tractor trailer trucks going up and down our blocks and it's tearing up our streets. This will now preserve it for an additional five years. The area in Century, Imperial Village, and there's one street on 109th between Yukon and Crenshaw that is in very bad shape. That particular streets and the ones in Imperial Village that you'll know there, they, we're going to have to do what's called cut and grind. They're literally going to dig up at least an inch of the current existing top and may even have to go to the rock bed in order to get that stuff cleaned up. Then they're going to put down a brand-new part of asphalt and rock sand combination that's going to be done. So it'll become like virtually a new street when they finish. Those streets have already been identified. Again, that's what that map was supposed to show you. I want to move on, if I can keep up my numbers here. I want to now move on to the median project. So again, you see something, don't know what's going on. I want to share with you that, I want to talk to you regarding Crenshaw and 113th Street. Crenshaw and 113th Street. You may know it by Wells World Fargo Bank is located. Across the street, you'll find Jack in the Box, but here we find this. I want you to realize, in the last five years, that intersection has generated 23 vehicle-to-vehicle collisions. 23. 23. Why? And of those 23 collisions, 19 of them was due to vehicles either attempting to make a left turn on the northbound or southbound of Crenshaw Boulevard from the Crenshaw Imperial Shopping Center, or from 113th Street by the bank, or the vehicle attempted to drive straight across Crenshaw Boulevard on to or from 113th Street. In addition, of those 23 collisions, 22 people were reported injured. Therefore, once we started doing this tabulation and we must replaced two fire hydrants already in the last 90 days, we said, "We need to come up with some ways, some means in order to address this issue." Therefore, we now have what is called a temporary yellow delineators. It simply means, "You're not going to make left turns anymore. That's enough. Enough's enough." Life is far worth more than your disappointment that you got to go to Imperial Highway. So that being the case, I want you to be made aware of it. But then when you, once you change something and people become a pattern habit, it creates another problem. Well, I'm used to making my left turn at 113th going to Jack in the Box. Or I don't want, or going to the shopping center. And so I don't have to go to Imperial Highway and have to double back. Sorry. You have a choice. But there were so many of them that are currently mindset. You know, our minds are trained. And you're used to becoming a creature of habit. It's going to be my way or the highway. Well, guess what? You've got the highway now. Because what we discovered, because you're a creature of habit and always want to make that left turn to go in at 113th in Crenshaw to the Jack in the Box and all those tenants there, that the traffic went all the way back to Brolly Hut. Anybody know where Brolly Hut is? 112th and Crenshaw? So we are going to take two things. We're going to change the signalization of the lighting at 111th Place by the Crenshaw Library. And we're going to change the lighting signalization at Imperial and Crenshaw. And those two left-hand turn lanes that used to exist, if you were going northbound on Crenshaw and you approached 113th to make a turn to go west on 113th, and that lane that you're going north, I'm sorry, south on Crenshaw and you approach 113th to make a left to go on that, that's all going to become one long left-hand turn lane to approach Imperial Highway. So that way we can help reduce that traffic buildup. So I thought you would appreciate knowing that information. Next one. So you see things happen in the community, or you don't even know they're happening in the community, but now you're going to start looking, huh? How about the right turn only at 108th Street at Crenshaw Boulevard? If you're not aware of it, Winchell's Donut. Winchell's Donut. Oh yeah, I mentioned, see, you mentioned the markets of the store. You can remember that. Where's 108th and Crenshaw? Oh, you mean Winchell's! There's been so many accidents, and I mean fatalities, that have occurred there that when the light got moved from 108th to 109th, now that created that wide window of opportunities. And there's individuals that think they can go from a zero stop to beat 40 miles an hour traffic going north or south on Crenshaw. It's not going to happen. So the engineers, again, we have these delineators there temporarily. They will become permanent, that you'll have to make right-hand turn only at that location. Again, public safety. Just wanted you to be made aware of that. Now, for those that come to the town hall meetings, I want you to be made aware that on the April Town Hall Meeting, there was a resident specifically said, "At Lamoli Avenue and 108th, there is no street signage." So how in the world is a person that's out of this area doesn't know where that's located? So I said, "I'm glad you brought it to my attention." I can't be your eyes and ears for the entire community, so therefore I need your assistance. So guess what? We found out what happened. Not once, but three times, someone stole our signs. So the new signage is now up, and because it's now up, we're saying, "Okay, they now have special bolts anchored to that, and had to put down a special pole to discourage, you never stop, but discourage them from taking our tax dollars because we have to keep making new signs." Am I good? All right. What does that mean? Doggone it. Well, they told me my time is up. Thank you very much. God bless you all. Did you enjoy yourselves? Will you come again? All right. God bless you all. Thank you very much. Good night.